Call to order. City Commission meeting for Wednesday, April 21st, 2021. Records show that all commissioners are present. First item up is the Order of Business. Mr. Winningham, are there any changes to the Order of Business?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there is no changes to the agenda as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions on the Order of Business?
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve the Order of Business by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Soboluk. Further discussion? Not all in favor of the Order of Business as presented, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Next item up is the Consent Agenda. Are there any items on the Consent Agenda that Commissioners wish to discuss? Seeing no concerns or comments on the Consent Agenda, I'd look for a motion.
I'd move to approve the Consent Agenda.
We have a motion to approve the Consent Agenda by Commissioner Soboluk. Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Do have a couple items on the timetable this evening, so we will move straight into Administration and Finance. Mr. Winningham, we have, the first item up is a site authorization for Dunn County Fair Association to, if I'm correct, do some charitable gambling.
Yeah, Mr. President and Commissioners, if you've reviewed that site authorization, it's, the request is for your approval and the staff recommends approval for Dunn County Fair Association to place gaming into the Fat Fish Brewing.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Winningham. Commissioners, do you have any questions before I ask mine? I don't know if you have a rep here. Did you have a question?
I was just wondering, are they the current gaming, running that site now?
So this is just a renewal?
Yes.
Okay. I guess my only comment then would be, I'm concerned that we don't have a local charity in there, because this is money that goes out of the county, out of the city, on a weekly basis. And I don't know if Mr. Toose is representing Fat Fish, or can, there a reason why we, that you chose?
Tracy Toose with Fat Fish. Yeah, when we opened up, we approached the couple charities and all the other charities wanted rent, wanted us to pay them to be there on an annual basis, and Dunn County Charities pays us to be there. That's the big one. And when we first opened, the Dickinson Youth Organization said that they couldn't take on any.
Additional?
Any additional, so.
And the other ones wanted you to pay rent?
Yep.
Okay. Good enough explanation for me.
Okay.
Any other questions for Mr. Toose? There are no more questions for staff or Mr. Toose. I'd look for a motion.
I move.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions or comment? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Next item up is a proclamation, and the proclamation is for Mental Health American, from the Mental Health American Foundation, mental health, excuse me, and this is for Mental Health Month 2021. This is a City of Dickinson proclamation for fitness, for mind and for body, whereas mental health is essential to everyone's overall health and well-being, and whereas all Americans experience times of difficulty and stress in their lives, and whereas there is a strong research that diet, exercise, sleep, and stress management can help all Americans protect their health and well-being, and whereas mental health conditions are real and prevalent in our nation, and whereas with effective treatment, those individuals with mental health conditions can recover and lead full, productive lives, and whereas each business, school, government agency, healthcare provider, organization, and citizen share the burden of mental health problem and has a responsibility to promote mental health, wellness, and support prevention efforts. Now therefore, I, Scott Decker, Mayor of the City of Dickinson, on behalf of the entire City Commission and the Dickinson community, do hereby proclaim that May 2021 Mental Health Month in the City of Dickinson. And I would look for a motion on this proclamation.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. All in favor of approving this proclamation, state aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Pass that over to Mr. Winningham. Our next item up on our Order of Business this evening is the Historic Preservation Commission, and that will be handled by Museum Director Furman. Welcome.
Good evening. Mr. President, Commissioners, I am pleased to appear before you today to ask you to consider giving your approval to the nomination of Dr. Chris Augustine, Dr. Steve Doherty, and Mr. Sean Lees to join the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission. As you may recall, one of the responsibilities of a certified local government is that we maintain a qualified Historic Preservation Commission, whose members preferably possess professional qualifications in history, architectural history, archaeology, anthropology, curation, planning, landscape architecture, or related fields, or who have a personal interest in historic preservation. In addition to an interest and willingness to serve, the education, experience, and background of these three candidates touch on several of those fields I've mentioned, and each has been preliminarily approved by the North Dakota State Historic Preservation Office for service on our commission. I did distribute complete resumes or curriculum vitae for the candidates on file, but just briefly, I can give a little bit of background for our gathering here tonight. Dr. Christopher Augustine is Director of the Dickinson Research Extension Center. He holds a PhD in Soil Science from NDSU, of which the research center is a part. The Research Extension Center, originally known as the Dickinson Experiment Station, is in itself worthy of local landmark status, both in terms of its role in dry land farming research, and is cited as one of the oldest continuously operating U.S. Weather Bureau National Weather Service stations. Dr. Steve Doherty is Chair of the Department of Social Science at DSU. He holds a PhD in History from Loyola University, and has taught at the college level since 1992, and at DSU since 2004. The last candidate, Mr. Sean Lees, is Director of Student Services for Dickinson Public Schools. He holds an MS in Education, and his experience includes several years teaching social studies and history at the high school level in southwest North Dakota, as well as various administrative educational posts for over the past 32 years. So at this time, the Dickinson Historic Preservation Commission asks that Dr. Augustine, Dr. Doherty, and Mr. Lees be considered for membership on HPC to begin their initial three-year terms at the Commission's May meeting.
Thank you, Mr. Furman. Are there any questions for Mr. Furman on these appointees? Not, I'd look for a motion on, to consider the approval of our three interested citizens for the Historic Preservation Commission.
I'd move to approve these three candidates.
Yep, okay.
Historic Preservation Committee.
We have a motion to approve these three candidates by Commissioner Soboluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Just like to add that this will be the first time we've actually had a full HPC commission in well over four years, so we really appreciate your support.
Moving along, we'll go into our monthly financial report. That will be handled by Accountant Maury.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before we get started, I just want to remind the public, as we typically do, that these collections are on a two-month leg, so the revenue that we're seeing today for March was earned in January of 2021. So with that, starting with our 1% sales tax collections, we're actually up 104,000 from where we were in March of 2020, the red line being 2021 and the blue line being 2020. So we had about a 30% increase over the prior year. First three months total, you can see the first two months we were down, so we're down about 251,000 for the quarter, which is about a 16% decrease from where we were in the first quarter of 2020. This slide here is also a reminder to the public that we collect our sales tax in two separate funds, so this is exactly half of the previous slide. Our hospitality, or, excuse me, our hospitality tax revenue, so in, again, with the blue line being 2020 and the red line being 2021, you can see in March we're down just about $3,000, so about a 5% decrease from March of 2020. First quarter total, we're down about 50,000 altogether, so about a 22% decrease in our first quarter 2021 compared to 2020. In our occupancy tax, we're down about $2,000 in our March collections compared to March of 2020, so it's about a 17% decrease in our occupancy tax. In first quarter totals, we're down about 14,000 altogether, which is about, just under 25% decrease for the first quarter. In our oil impact revenue, so this revenue in March was down about 144,000 compared to March of 2020, so about a 12% decrease there. First quarter total, we're down about 657,000, which is an 18%, roughly 18% decrease from the prior year. We collected 11.2 million in 2020. If we stay at the same average, we're projected to collect about 11.5 million in 2021. And then moving on to our general fund, so that graph on the left is our general fund expenses. So as of last week, you can see we were about 27, just about 28% expended in our general fund expenses, and then we had 72% left to collect, or, excuse me, I apologize, that's for the general fund expenses around the left, so 27% expense through this point of the year. And then the graph on the right will be our general fund revenue for what we've collected, so about 41% collected as of last week in our general fund revenue, with 58% remaining to be collected.
Maury? We're at 41% there in revenues, and we're only a quarter of the way through the year. Can you kind of explain?
Yes, absolutely, Commissioner Oderman. So the reason for that, we took this snapshot as of last week, and we transfer, our monthly budget transferred the first of each month, so that actually included the April 1st transfers from, yep.
Okay, thank you.
And then the final slide here is the same for our enterprise funds, so the graph on the left is the expenses. So 21.6% expended in our enterprise funds as of last week, and then in our revenue, you can see we've collected about 25% of our revenue projections in our enterprise funds. So with that, I'll do my best to answer any questions, and City staff records approval.
Thank you, Mr. Maury. Any questions for Mr. Maury on the monthly financial report? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion to approve the monthly financial report.
Mr. President, move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Next item up is our 2020 Audit Engagement Letter, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you is a letter to engage the auditing firm of Woodmore Row for them to allow them to perform the audit for the year in 2020, which ended. So the estimated fee for the audit would be 38,000 to 41,000. This fee is covered in the city finance budget, we budgeted 48,000. The staff of Woodmore Row would start their fieldwork at the end of this month upon approval of this letter. Staff is recommending approval of the engagement letter for the year-end 2020 audit financial statements, and I'll stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this engagement letter?
Are they the same company I did last year's?
Are there any other questions? Now I'd look for a motion on the engagement letter.
I'll move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none will vote. Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is a refinancing letter of intent for our 2013 revenue bonds, and this again will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The letter that is included here is the letter of intent before you allows Collier Securities that we work with, that works with our bonds, to work with our bond council to reissue our current 2013 series revenue bonds to our 2021 series by refinancing them. By refinancing, this reduces the interest cost rate from 3.965 to a 1.304. This is keeping the same current maturity date of October 2025, and then, and in turn, this will reduce our annual payment out of the half percent sales. I will stand for any questions that you may have. We are looking for approval. City staff and two commissioners reviewed the intention of the refinancing and support the approval of the letter of intent.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson or staff on the letter of intent to refinance or, I guess, I guess, refinance our 2013 bonds? There are no questions, I'd look for a motion.
Move to approve.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick, second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up is we have a U.S. Fiscal Year 2022 Community Funding, and this will be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
President Decker, I believe that City Administrator Winningham is going to be doing this one.
Oh, okay. It's listed on mine as you.
Yep, it is listed, I see that.
Mr. President, Commissioners, as we've reviewed the community-based project that the federal government has identified as a potential funding source within the U.S. fiscal budget for 2022, what we're offering this evening is a resolution that would support that project for the City of Dickinson. That project would encompass the downtown area, the city hall, the town square, and various revitalization initiatives that the city has pursued, to include lighting, public security around the area of downtown, and we have submitted the draft documents to our U.S. Representative, Honorable Representative Kelly Armstrong. We have received staff input back from Representative's office, and one of those letters would be support from your City Commission and a resolution that supports this initiative for the City of Dickinson. So the request this evening is to approve a resolution for that project and approve a letter that supports that project, so that we can submit that prior to the 29 April due date for potential federal budget appropriations for the City of Dickinson.
Thank you, Mr. Winningham. Any questions for Mr. Winningham on this resolution? This should be 13-2021. Mr. Winningham, along with this resolution, we will be submitting, you'll be asking the Commission to submit individual letters, am I correct? For the...
There's a couple of ways, Mr. President, we can do this. One general letter we drafted that would be signed by the mayor, that's supported by all the Commissioners, that by vote based on that resolution, or we could do individual letters, adding to, essentially create the same letter and put your names as a Commissioner, which we could do, that would give us five letters. We have received multiple letters of support from various organizations throughout the city, throughout the community, and so I think more is probably better, because it does eventually go to a subcommittee within the U.S. Government, and they won't know anything other than what they have in front of them. They'll have to probably Google the City of Dickinson, and so we want as much information presented to them for this federal matching dollars.
Are there any other questions for Winningham or staff on this resolution? Again, I think I have the number correct, 13-2021?
Make the motion to approve 13-2021.
We have a motion to approve Resolution 13-2021 by Commissioner Frederick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further questions or comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick.
Aye.
Ms. Walla.
Aye.
Mr. Oderman.
Aye.
Mrs. Soboluk.
Aye.
Chair votes aye, motion carries. Our next item up, we will have a town square update, and that will be handled by City Administrator Winningham.
Mr. President, Commissioners, we do have a representative to present on behalf of the city that's going to update us on the town square. In summary, before Zach begins to talk, we're looking for the next phase to go forward for construction documents. What you're seeing before you, I'll let them get into detail, but essentially an update, some of the higher costs that are going to be associated with a few of the minor changes to get it correct, and then some of the options for essentially down-selecting what we thought could be the complete park, and we may have to consider reducing some of the items that are in the totality of the project. But with that, I'll turn it over to Zach.
Good afternoon, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. I'm Zach Matheran with JLG Architects. I've been working with you all and the Downtown Task Force for the last several years, working through this project. Also have Nate Hacker with me, Project Manager with JLG Architects. What we have today for you is, as Brian mentioned, is a summary essentially of the recent progress we've been making on the project. We've been engaged in the, what we call, the design development phase of this project, and we're ready to move on to the next phase of the project, which would be the construction documents phase. So I'm going to breeze through this document very, very quickly, and then we're going to come back to the budget and talk more specifically about the budget. So page one of the document is essentially a sign-off. What we're requesting is that you provide us an understanding that you have reviewed the progress that we've made up until this point, that you're in agreement or understanding about the project budget and where we're at today in terms of the estimating of the project budget, and that we're approved to move forward into the construction documents phase of the project. Just a reminder that we already have a contract in place for the entire project duration, including fees associated with that, so we're not asking today for any change in the contract or fees, but just a periodic sign-off on this particular phase. In this phase, we've selected the major systems of the building, the structure, the mechanical systems, the lighting systems. We've also selected the materials that the project will be built out of, for example, the type of concrete on the exterior and the type of flooring inside the building. And finally, we've refined the design with the task force as we've gone along. So for example, there was discussions about having enough space for concessions and ability for maybe a third-party group to be in the building and serve concessions, and so we have made some increases to the building to accommodate those items with the building committee. And finally, we've done a reestimation of the costs associated with the project, and so we'll review those costs with you. Ultimately, we would be poised to move on to the construction documents phase upon approval of the design development phase. In the construction documents phase, we'll be finalizing the details of the project, assessing very minute details of constructibility, how materials meet, and we'll actually do another estimate upon the completion of that phase as well. Our overall goal of the project is to stay on track so that there is the opportunity for you to put this project out for bid this fall, so that it could potentially start construction this fall.
Okay, Zach, before you get into the numbers, so we don't lose you on the numbers, we have timetables tonight, so I'm just gonna, we're gonna go into the 5 o'clock timetable, do those. I don't want you to start in the middle of the numbers and then all of a sudden have to quit, so before you get into the numbers, we'll do the 5 o'clock, or 5:15, and we'll get right back to you after the public comments, okay?
Understood.
All right. Our 5 o'clock timetable this evening will be the Dickinson Convention and Visitors Bureau for their 2020 Annual Report, and I'd like to welcome Executive Director Steele.
Didn't mean to chase him out of there or anything. You're probably going to be a little bit more interested. Thank you, everybody. We try to do this so that every year we kind of do an update of what's gone on from the past year, and I only got timetable here. So I'll do a couple things. I know you guys had gotten your annual report, goals and strategies, and I'm just doing a little bit more of an update here. So quickly, I think you guys, everybody realizes where everybody was at throughout the state this last year with the occupancy. You can see in '17, we were at 42.3%. We went up in '18 to 49, then 56, and of course, we dropped for the year down to 42.3. Now, if you take a look, though, what's interesting is that North Dakota for the state overall was 36.2. So Stark County led the state in occupancy percentage from March through September. We did very well with that. Obviously, numbers were down, but comparatively, we did much better than Lottum. This one, I've taken a couple slides from State Tourism, just to kind of give you an idea. you an idea. You can see again where 2020 was, in the blue, dropped down in April, obviously, started to come back up, the trend line again, and a little bit, give you an idea of that. Our first quarter here for, for Dickinson, so I took the three different quarters for the last few years, and you can see, obviously, 19 was going very, very well heading up. You know, 2020 started to go down, but we are starting to go back up on a climb now for 2021, even though we're still down, numbers are down on that, obviously. But we are still going into, you know, coming off of our slower seasons with this. 2021 average daily rate was about $71, and last year, 2021 about $71, and 2020 about $72. You can see again, the average daily rate had been going down from, especially dropping back into the 2020 there. So we ended up with $68.93 for 2020, and the state was $72.94. What we had that's interesting here, though, if you see the blue for 2020, we really started to jump again in June on the state's analytics, North Dakota Tourism website, and we started to go back into that fall season and going into that off-season. As things changed with COVID, people becoming more, you know, comfortable with the vaccine coming out, all of that, interest really took off for the state analytics. I believe that they were over 52% in 2020 over 2019. So we started to see trend lines of interest coming back with that. And this one is another one that's very interesting. Of course, you can see again, these are in their analytics with that, how 2020 really took off for interest with people. And if you look at the far left there with the dot, it's already starting ahead right now for that interest with that. So I'm the Chair of the Travel Alliance Partnership, and we work during the legislative session. So right now, of course, we're always trying to make sure the Tourism Division has more funding. You can see the comparison with that. We take a look at our neighboring states, how far much, how far below that our state is when we look at that competing audience. Right now, there is, we're not done with the session right now, but I know 20, Senate Bill 2018 was, as of right now, passed, going back to a conference committee, for additional $7 million for marketing for the state. And we're hoping that, that that will continue to go on to the Governor's Office. Possibly 4.2 million would be for tourism-based infrastructure projects that would probably, if, if it goes through, would start in 2023. These could be things even such as the, the museum complex or things like that. So we'll see how that session goes, but it's been very busy with that. So, um, we did receive some PPP funding. This was at a later date because we were the 501(c)(6) that ended up being at a, at a later day of being approved federally. So we're putting some print back in. You know, that's a smaller part of what we do. We try to make sure we have reader listings with that. But the online will be our main marketing tool that we, that we will be doing. So this, other than probably $2,500, that'll go into some extra summer staff, the board has said we're going to put that back in and, and try to ramp up more with our, with our marketing, because we really had started out with zero, just making sure that what we did was just organic within our office. So we'll be working with Tourism Division on a couple of different programs, influencer programs, social media posts with them, Midwest Travel Network, and then some that we will be doing and placing ourselves. So that's about 40 with that. Okay. Little bit again here breaks it down. You can see those things that we just got done talking about, we'll, we'll put it in with the, the partners that we have and what we have in, in our office. So, um, our original marketing budget for, for that was $35,000, almost 36, which was really basically contracts. That's about it. Software tools, tear-off math pads. We did not have anything in for guides, for reprinting, anything. So with those funds with that, we're going to put in, like I said, a little bit of print. If we need additional guides, we'll do those. We put it back into the rest area program. Initially, we did not even do that, but we're going to do that now. So gives you an idea that we bumped that up. Oops.
Carrie, who, who, the, the rest area guides, who does the rotation on that? Who handles that?
Uh, North Dakota Tourism Division. And so that's an annual program. You pay $250, and then you must commit, it used to be $5,000 at a minimum to get started. This year, they did $4,000. And then if you're out, then you have to start sending those over. So, yeah, people sign up for that one.
And that's the physical?
Yep.
Okay.
Yeah. And also just FYI, what they will be doing over at the Chateau is putting in a little bit larger visitor center with everybody's brochures going in there, and they're going to be revamping some of the different visitor and rest area sites through some funds that the Tourism Division will begin.
So our 2021 brochures are not printed?
No, we did not. And neither did the state, actually. There was...
I was just gonna, I stopped today on my way back from Bismarck, and we have 2020.
Yep. 2020, and that's what we're using. It, you know, we changed the size of it. It costs us probably about $14,000 just for that, just for the printing with that. Some CVBs did it. They got more funds. Some went ahead and did it, but they didn't. So you can see that. But we're going to be doing some new programs. And again, the online is big. We secured InstaMeet on April 30th. We'll have 15 to 20 bloggers out of Midwest Travel Network, and we'll be starting with Fluffy Fields, Ukrainian Institute, and the museum over there. And Julie will be doing a social media presentation to them. Then they go on the next day over to Medora for an InstaMeet, and they'll be taking over their Instagram blogs with that. Another new one that we've done, because really, it's really focusing on the road travel this year throughout the state, and Joel Walters in our office is the one who's created this, and you may have seen it on Facebook. He's created Facebook. We have posters we've done, and this, this is, Tourism is one of their favorites right now. They are really going to be pushing that, and we'll be doing a lot more with that one. So if you haven't gone on to do it for the Facebook, please like that, and he's created quite a few videos with that. So the road trips again will be a main focus for us in trying to get off those different, um, main interstates. Another project that staff is, is doing, Julie and Julie, and they're working with Bob over at the Museum Center. Many, many years ago, I had worked with the State Historical Society, and actually Ryan Gillicker at Custom Data, and we did a print, a walking tour brochure. And they had been an audio thing, but it's one of those old things you used to put in your car and whatever. I don't even know where it's at anymore. So they're going to be creating podcasts of the different types of buildings downtown. And each one will have a historical photo, and it'll have the look of this, and then they'll be able to click on that, hear an audio. And then one other project that they're going to be doing is going up to Prairie Outpost Park. And then they'll be going to the different buildings and creating podcasts, because it, sometimes people aren't able to get in. You know, it just, you know, whether it's a, you know, whatever day or time with that, even if it's in the off-season with no tour guides. And sometimes we get fall travelers, and then those workers are gone. So they'll also be creating that. We did a little bit of refresh. We've changed, refreshed our logo again. It's been a while. And so we did the Visit Dickinson, the Western Edge, and we put "North Dakota" on there. And then that way, we can also use that in areas, whether it's internationally or whatever, knowing that the North Dakota is in there. But it was some, you know, we've done this off and on through the years, and it just needed a different little bit of refresh. We did keep the parchment paper for some of that. We have created a whole visual guide style guidelines so that staff knows as we go along to make sure that everything's consistent. And you can see that with some of the brand fonts. It's about probably 13 pages long with that. But it's a guide as we go along or other people. So really, that's, you know, we try to make it so that the destination that everybody comes to, whether it's to visit or to work or whatever it is, is something that they can, you know, consider either coming back to, telling friends and family, or relocating. And we've done quite a bit with the, with the relocating, too, with the packages that we hand out and different things. So, um, so that's on there. You know, the annual report, maybe I won't take up your time. You have all gotten that. And the other thing I do have, and I don't know if you would rather I mail it, I do have an updated marketing plan in the budget. I can either hand it out now, email it to you, or whatever you'd like.
I think email would be good for us.
Sure. Yeah. And some I just got done doing, because we just got some of those, we're finishing some of it also. So if you have any other questions, I...
You have your, you also, part of our packet is the goals and strategies. Anything unique or different?
Um, just that some of them you may have seen crossed out, only because there may not be some funding. Some of it, what we've been doing for the meetings and conventions historically, has been doing a poster sent out quarterly. Well, without the funds with that right now, we're not doing that. And some of the things we're doing is really revisiting the meetings and convention part of it. But the other things are, some of it's very standard of what we do, and then other times have other, other projects. Till we get going through this next year, then we're going to take a look at some other ones, too. And I think the last ones that we just added, you know, we'll probably just add new ones every year, too.
Are we seeing any interest in groups coming back for conventions or meetings?
It, it's been slow. We have had some groups, but I would say it's been slow. Some are still looking at what's going on with the COVID. Some are still going with the virtual. I will tell you that we've done a survey out to 400 and some groups that we just got back just recently. In fact, we closed it last Friday, and we did a Google form asking a lot of different questions. Have you been here? What would bring here? How much space do you need? How many breakout rooms? Do you need large space? All of those. And so those are just been compiled now, and that'll help, I think, some of the other discussions that some people have had, too, moving forward.
That's all information we can get from you, and I think that would help the Commission with us moving forward with the discussion of possible events and our, you know, and the location, size, everything that we need. The interest in the state, you think that's driven because the state's open opposed to other states?
Well, I do. A lot of it. The people that we had come in express that to us. They, they were relieved to get into an area that was much more open. They were very interested in the open spaces or at Theodore Roosevelt National Park, and of course, that drove a lot of it. So I think our, our climate that we had here last year and coming in has been, it's, yeah, they're very interested in our area because of that.
Okay, thank you. Are there any other questions, Commissioners? All right. Thank you, Carrie.
All right. Thank you.
Our next item up on our public hearing this evening is the annual report from the Sunrise Youth Bureau, and that'll be handled by Director Holly Prowse and associate.
Good evening, Mayor Decker and Commissioners. I am, my name is Holly Prowse, and I am the Director with Sunrise Youth Bureau.
And I'm Amber Hofstadt. I'm the Youth Advisor.
So we did mail out our 2020 annual reports, so I believe you guys all received those. I know there is some new Commissioners, so we want to explain a little bit of what Sunrise does and our services, and if you guys have any questions at all, just let us know. First of all, on behalf of our board and our staff and myself, we just want to thank you guys for your continued support. I know we have a four-year contract with you guys, and we appreciate the support and the funding that you guys bring to the youth in Dickinson. Our main programming include diversion, intervention, education prevention, out-of-school suspension, and attendant care. We work with youth under the age of 18 that get into trouble with the law or may have school or home issues. Amber does our diversion program, so I'll let her explain a little bit about diversion and out-of-school suspension.
Okay, so with diversion, basically, I work with first-time offenders and minor offenders. So juvenile court gets police reports. So if a child's been cited with something and it's their first offense or it's a minor offense, juvenile court looks at it and decides, do we want to divert this child or put him through the court system? And they always try to divert them if it's that minor offense or a first-time offender. So I get the diverted cases. I meet with the families. We talk to the child about what they did wrong, what they've been cited with, any concerning behaviors that the parents are worried about. And then they are given consequences based on those behaviors. So class with Holly, like anger management, self-esteem, vaping is a huge one right now. Then they can have community service. They can be given, they might have to do a letter of apology, pay restitution, whatever we can come up with that will help them learn from this situation, make better choices in the future. I also explain to them what's going to happen if they continue that behavior. So what further citations might look like, what further consequences might look like if they continue down that path. So those, those are the cases that come from juvenile court. We also do something very similar. We call it crisis intervention. So children do not have to be cited to come see us. We can work with them through a parent referral. So if parents are just having trouble with their kids, they can call us and say, hey, this is what's going on. We bring them in, have that meeting. We give them the same kind of consequences, and we basically just become a support network for that family. So that's diversion and crisis intervention. For out-of-school suspension, the surrounding area schools, typically the Dickinson schools, we've had some from South Art and, and close area schools, but typically it's Dickinson schools. If a child is suspended from school, the school has the option to send them to the Youth Bureau for the duration of their suspension. So they don't always get to go home, play video games, do nothing all day. They get to come sit with us, do their homework, and then we also do other education on, like, why they were cited or why they were suspended in the first place. So they spend the entire suspension with us.
Along with that, we try to do prevention programming in the schools, mainly elementary, but we do do some junior high and high school prevention. So it's not a fee to the school. We send out a letter at the beginning of the school year, and we have, good grief, like 50 different prevention programs that we can offer the schools. So common ones are drugs, alcohol, tobacco, respect and rules, bullying and teasing, any sort of prevention that we can do to hopefully further assist future issues with these youth. And again, we send a letter to the surrounding eight county schools, and then it's up to their principal, the teacher, school counselor, social worker to make contact with us to set up those programming. This last year, of course, was a little different. We were still able to do prevention programs in the schools through Zoom, and now we're just finally starting to get in there in person. So our numbers went down, of course, a little bit in 2020. We tried to still continue our services the best that we could because of the unfortunate situation that everybody was dealing with. But we do have a full-time person that does the prevention program in the schools. And then like Amber said, I do like the one-on-one classes for the youth that have anger management problems or vaping citation or things like that. And then as far as attendant care program, that's where we house youth. So we have about 12 part-time on-call attendant care workers that we call in if a youth comes in. So we work a lot with law enforcement. If they get a phone call from a parent saying, my child's being unruly, we just don't know what to do with them, they have the option to cite them and bring them in to Sunrise. Or if they get a runaway from out of state, they could bring them to Sunrise, and then we can try to work with the families to get them back where they need to be. We also work a lot with social workers, social services, if they need a temporary placement for youth to stay. We do have a new facility. If you guys didn't know that, we are in the brand-new facility by the hospital in the clinic. Stark County was fortunate or nice enough to allow us to be in that facility. We do have an extra bedroom, which we have definitely utilized this month. We've been very busy with the attendant care program. We're the only attendant care site in western North Dakota. The other ones closest to us would be in Williston and in Bismarck. These programs are vital to our community. We assist with troubled youth and their families, as well as provide education prevention programs to younger students. We help assist our local law enforcement and social service agencies and do as much prevention programming as well as crisis intervention as we can. Amber and I have been there for quite a while. We're kind of veterans and been working together for quite a while. So we definitely have seen some unique situations, as well as some very sad, unfortunate situations. But we're, we're there to help as much as we can for these youth and families in our communities. Do you guys have any questions?
We are also on-call 24 hours a day, too, so law enforcement can always contact us as needed, which is usually in the middle of the night when they have a youth that they need to be brought in. So they can always get ahold of Holly or I at that time. Do you guys have any questions?
Any, any questions from the Commission on the Sunrise Youth Bureau annual report or any of the other information they provided us with this evening? Have you seen the numbers in 2021 starting to spike back up, or?
Yeah. Amber's very, very busy with diversion. There was one month that it was kind of quiet, and we work, work very closely with Chase, with juvenile court, and she even made contact, like, what's going on? We haven't received any referrals. But then it's been crazy busy. Same with the attendant carrots. You can tell that, I don't know if kids got, they're in their house too long and just all this built-up anxiety and frustration, and our numbers are definitely increasing.
Any other questions, comments? I think... I think, I mean, my personal opinion, I think you guys do an excellent job, and I'm glad you got some new facilities to work out of, so I'm sure that helps a little bit. Continue to let us know if you have any needs that are being unmet.
Okay. Well, we appreciate you guys. We appreciate Linda and Suzie. They're on our board, if you guys didn't know that. So we appreciate all of you guys. And if you guys ever know of any family that is in need, just let us know or refer them to us, and we'll take care of it.
Okay, wonderful. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. Our next item up on the public hearing and public comments for the evening is for the public comments that are not on the agenda, or if there is something on the agenda you wish to discuss, this is your time. Come forward, state your name, and let the city commission know your concerns or have comments on any item. So anyone from the public, come to the podium. And if you're watching online, you can phone in at area code 701-456-7006.
The conference is currently empty. You will hear silence.
So anyone from the public that wishes to make any comments, please come forward.
Hello, commissioners. My name's Jeff Fitzick. I'm a Dickinson City resident. The other day, I was interested in getting a hard copy of the minutes from one of the commission meetings to just double-check on something, and I'm not the sharpest knife in the drawer or the most tech-savvy, but I went online, and I couldn't find it at the city website. And so I contacted Candace at the front, and she was very helpful, but she couldn't find it. So she referred me to Rita, and Rita was very helpful, and she couldn't find it. She had to talk to the IT department to help me, guide me through on my computer on how to find your minutes. And then I found them, and thanks to Rita, and she was, again, very helpful and said she'd continue to be if she had, if I had any further questions. And we ended the phone conversation, and I went to print them off, and they wouldn't print. And none of the Adobe Packet informations opened. And so there were no minutes essentially there. And so I know Rita said that I could contact her if I had any further problems, and that's fine for me, but I thought to myself, you know, if anybody else in the public is trying to find the minutes online, they're going through this same thing. And I don't know if you guys have different software, different access codes, whatever, so maybe you don't even know this is what it takes. But what I ended up having to do, just so you kind of are aware from the web, website, was click on Government, click on City Commission, click on Minutes, click on Paperless Packets, then click on, please click on this for One Note. There's a whole sentence involved, but that's what it amounts to. And then click on April 2021, and then there was one more click on another April 2021 or whatever, to get to the point where I still couldn't actually see any minutes. So that's the procedure to, that's in place right now for the public, that what they see if they want to actually try and get to the minutes. And then I myself was unsuccessful in that when I finally got to that point. So I was just wondering if you guys were aware of that, and if there was something that could be done that simplifies that process a little bit, so people can get access to the minutes.
Mr. President.
Mr. Chairman.
Jeff, I, I want to say I feel your pain, because before, before I was on the commission, it is, I mean, it's, it's a process.
Yeah.
And, and we get, we get them sent right to our devices in One Note, and so, I mean, it's, it's easier for us. But, and, and, you know, some people would say, hey, yeah, the, the process is easy, you just have to click all these links. But it is, I mean, it can get tedious if you're looking for multiple dates and things like that, so I would support us trying to find some way to streamline this.
I, I think there is a process in place now. Mr. Winningham could probably speak to this, but there is a process to, to update and make our website a lot easier. Our, it, it was, when I first got on the commission six years ago, it was very, very hard. It's still hard, right? It, it is a process that we are, we are working, working through while the challenges to multitude of other IT challenges there are, and keeping things secure, too. Because what a lot of people don't realize is how many times we get attacked on a weekly basis, people trying to get in, and they're always trying to find back doors. So if everything is not watched and so that there is no back door in, you have, you know, what happened a few months ago when you had the big attack in the state and places got shut down, we are one of the lucky municipalities. We didn't get shut down because of how tight our security is. But that, I'm glad you brought this to our attention. Mr. Winningham, if you have any comments?
Say your name one more time, sir. I didn't catch it all the way.
Jeff Fitzick.
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 Fitzick, I'm sorry.
That's okay. You're new to the area.
Yeah. That's fair. Thank you. Thank you for that. Mr. Fitzick, I'm sorry that you got, that you were unable to get the information in a timely manner, because it, because when I'm sitting at home, these kind of ideas usually happen at about midnight, and I want the information, and so it's frustrating, and I'm, I apologize for that. We are looking at a review and a place that we can hang items on the portal to where it'd be less than three clicks, and that, that should be standard, and you should be able to look at and see that. And I, I agree, our website isn't super creative. Our IT department isn't, isn't at fault, really. It's, it's just, we haven't designed one as a team, really, to make it user-friendly. And, and we live in a day and age where we're saving money by doing most of this IT work and most of this creativity in-house. So once you ask for a company to come in, they have you over a barrel, because then they kind of own the process. And if you, if you've seen in other municipalities, even the county, they have been shut down for, for weeks at a time. We didn't have that issue because we do keep a pretty closed loop, but I do apologize because that should be readily available to you at any time. And so we are working through that, and, and I, quite frankly, didn't have it as my number one priority, but, but now it will become that. So thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Thank you, guys. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Fitzick.
Any, any questions or? Thank you.
Thank you again for bringing that to our attention. Anyone else? Anyone that is watching online or in the audience that wishes to come forward and speak to an issue, either on the agenda or not on the agenda, please come forward, state your name, let us know your concerns or questions. Anyone? Again, if you're watching online, 701-456-7006. Anyone from the public? Seeing and hearing no one from the public has any further comments on our agenda or items not on the agenda, I will close the public hearing, and we will continue with Zach's presentation on the town square.
All right. As we were discussing, essentially, the, the immediate task of this evening is, is to discuss the approval of the design development phase and the process of moving into the construction documents phase. Just for your information, this packet that you have in front of you is a summary. There is a 65-page document of drawings that is associated with this work that we've been working on. This can be made available to anyone digitally or in print, just FYI on that. I won't necessarily review that entire document, of course, today. So as we move through this packet, I'm going to skip the budget sheet for a moment, and we'll come back to it. This site plan is a representation of the project as we've developed it over the past several months. Essentially, we're working on the same project that was presented to you. We had some more, you know, graphic images, the rendering of the project. We're still on the same trajectory of that, just the, the drawings become a little more technical as we work through this process. And so the general format of the project is very similar, just for orientation purposes, north is to the left and City Hall is to the right, or future City Hall, if you will. The major components of the project include a stage and support building on the west side of the site. There is a play area with play features and a splash pad on the north portion of the site. There's a pavilion, a covered space for public and private events in the northwest corner of the site. There is landscaping and artificial turf on the west side of the site, and in the central area, there's a large open area for public gathering. This next page is, dives into more detail about the concessions functions of the project. And so I'm not going to go into detail about this, but I just want you to see this as, this is the level of detail that we've been working through with the task force to identify where should sinks go, where should countertops go. And recently, we did make a significant change to the project where we added 10 feet to the building and incorporated some additional features so that you could, in a, in a legal way, offer concessions with appropriate safety features, sanitization features, et cetera, that is required by the health department. And so this is one of the aspects of the project where we did make an increase, and so this did have an impact on the budget, which I will review when we get to that point. This sheet, this is a, is a representation of the project and things that we've needed to consider taking out of the project to stay on budget. So as you may recall, there's been an established budget of $4 million for the project. We're still working towards that goal and have a pathway to provide a $4 million project, but we have realized some changes in the market and in the volatility of prices right now, and so we have accommodated and made adjustments to the estimate to, to realize those kind of market conditions. So we are considering, we have a list of items that are not necessarily within the $4 million project cost and would come at a greater cost. And so, for example, these little rectangles throughout the site, they're wood benches. You don't need wood benches day one. There are concrete benches throughout the project, but having wood benches would be very nice and comfortable, and so we need to consider whether that's a high priority and whether you want that within the project, for example. And there, there's several items, like the pergola, the shade structures, some of the play features, and so this is just a representation of if the project budget remains and the bidding climate does not get better, you may have to make some concessions about some of these items may not be included in your final project. And finally, this last sheet shows you that the current project boundary, we're considering within the property lines of the site itself, and we know that there will need to be some repair of the sidewalk where we're connecting the utilities from the project site to the street, and we know there will need to be some reconstruction of the alley as we dig foundations for the building on the project site. All the areas highlighted in yellow, we've observed the conditions of the sidewalk and the alley, and they're not in great shape. And so what we're showing you is just a pathway to include those as, you know, elements of the project, whether they're funded by the project itself, the road, you know, your street department, your sidewalk pro, plan, you have other, you know, means by which these potentially could occur. But we have provided a cost, just for your information, if, in fact, it might make sense to replace those kind of city infrastructure items in parallel with this project. So coming back to the budget, and I know this sheet is almost impossible to read on screen, so you all have it in front of you. We'll talk about kind of how we came to a strategy of either, either maintaining the budget of $4 million and reducing the project to accommodate it, or increasing the project budget to accommodate all the, the, the needs and wants. Just to summarize, there's kind of three reasons that we see this kind of increase in costs. There's a lot of market volatility currently related to the pandemic and just market conditions. And so we are recommending that you keep a higher contingency than we would typically have at this time. At this time, we would typically reduce our 15% contingency to 10% and move those costs up into the construction. However, we've had, we've been watching bids come recently, and there's been a lot of volatility in the bidding of some of our projects based on those conditions. And so we highly recommend keeping your contingency at the higher value as a protection for you, so that you don't run into a problem where the project becomes undoable because you don't have that kind of extra little bit of contingency built in. The other reason is we've just been seeing general increases in costs in materials, especially steel and concrete and wood. There is quite a bit of steel and concrete in this project, and so we've been in communication with our engineers and the estimating team, and we've incorporated that kind of market condition of material costs going up. And the last point is that we did, did increase the size of the building and some of those systems, and so we can account for approximately $61,000 of the budget increase to that. So taking a look at this, I'm not going to go line by line, but I want to start essentially at the bottom. So at the bottom is a total project cost with alternates. And what alternates are, is a strategy to basically move parts of the project into a category that can be bid separately. So when you, when you bring this project to bid, we would bid the entire project. One part of it would be base bid, so everything you want for sure and must happen would be in a base bid. And then anything you want but is beyond your budget or not 100% critical would be an alternate. And so if the bids come in on bid day exactly as we've predicted, you would not necessarily have any room to add those alternates unless you increased your budget. If, for example, on bid day, prices came in favorably under our estimate, for example, if the bids came in at, for the sake of this conversation, $3.5 million, and there's a $4 million project, well, you could then choose to incorporate some of these add alternates into the project. So for, as an example, the project comes in, let's say, $50,000 under budget. That would allow you then to add the triceratops and rib play structures, which we've estimated at about $50,000. So you could reincorporate that into the project on bid day. So essentially, this is a path, this, we're creating a path that you can have everything you want, or if you can't afford that, you can still have a project that can be successful and can still be built for the $4 million total project cost. We've been in discussion with the task force about these specific alternate items. You know, there, there are a wide range of items. One of, you know, a few of them are adding synthetic ice rink and a portable movie screen. Those are things that the Downtown Association and the task force has, have identified. Those are things that the downtown association and the task force has identified as, you know, these would be really important to having frequent and all-year-round activities at Town Square. So those are high priorities for the task force, as examples. In discussion with the task force and Kristi Schwartz, who's the chair of the task force, essentially, the task force is recommendation or their goal would be to incorporate all of these items in the project. The DDA and the DID, I don't necessarily represent them specifically, but she also, Kristi also mentioned that the DDA and the DID is willing to kind of work with the city on the cost-sharing kind of formula of the project. You know, currently, it's my understanding, it's a $2 million city, $2 million DID cost-sharing of the project. If there was interest in increasing the project budget to accommodate the alternate items, they are interested and willing to, I guess, come to the table for that discussion. Ultimately, we could go through any of these items in detail if you'd like. What we ultimately want to understand from the commission and the task force is, are there any items on this alternate list that are must haves? And the reason we ask that is because we would want to think about how to incorporate those items into the base bid of the project so that they're guaranteed to happen on bid day. If you leave items in this alternate list till bid day, there's potential that they may not happen. And so if there are any that are non-negotiable, we would recommend maybe we consider increasing the budget to accommodate them. Or if there are any of these items that are of no interest to the city to pursue, we could also just remove them from the project and not think about it anymore. But based on the input from the task force, they are interested in all these items. We have identified their five top priorities if all of them cannot be accommodated, but they are certainly interested in all of those. Just a bit more level of detail, some of the items you could add later. They have no effect on the actual construction process day one. So, for example, the ice rink, the synthetic ice rink and the portable movie screen, those are, we're not even designing those items. Those are items that would be purchased directly from a vendor. We're just planning the space for them. So it's something that you could add or phase in the project at any time. There are other items which have the B categorization that it's nearly impossible or would be cost-prohibitive to add them at a later time. For example, adding integrated splash pad lighting. What that is, is essentially, within the splash pad, every nozzle that shoots out water could have a light fixture built into it that would add excitement and colorful light. That's not something you can really add in the future. And so it's a decision that would have to be made basically during that bidding process. It's not something that you could add a year or two down the road. And so that's an additional tool you can use to make any decisions on these, whether they're possible to add later or not.
If we leave the, say, the triceratops out, my understanding is, looking at this drawing, you basically have a sand pit there.
If we leave the triceratops out and the rib structure, what we would have is a sand pit with a very large T-Rex, basically a faux fossil that would be inside that sand. And we're still working on the details of sand versus other materials.
That was going to be my next question.
But essentially, we...
Is there concern over a sand pit there with the wind we have?
Sitting through the meetings, I think the sand, we've been in discussion, trying to figure out the cost, sand versus some other material. Either it's a pliable material that's weighted enough to where it wouldn't blow away or not, or just have a surface that's textured or poured that would remain in that layer.
Like a soft texture.
Soft texture, something, you know, that I've seen in other areas. I think to kind of not really speed us along, but the task force looked at the ones that are highlighted in red that we think we should bid out. I recommend from the staff is that we would bid those out and potentially add one more for the bid out, and that's really the, you'll see number eight there, the civil scope. It's the sidewalk and the alley. And so the sunk cost of doing that again after we get the site built is probably going to be better off doing, recommending getting that one also added so we can get the bid for that so that it's one project, because we're going to have to do that alley and the sidewalks. If you've seen the condition now, you can do some of the pavers, but I think once you get the site constructed, we're going to have to do that sidewalk and the alley again. So it would essentially be those five that the task force recommends is high priority, and then an additional number eight. So six total, and get those bid out as an alternative with this entire project. It's going to increase our costs. There's hope that we find alternate funding other than the cities and the public-private partnership with DID, and so that would be the recommendation.
Mr. Whinningham? I got to ask about number four. What's, I mean, do we have an idea on how, what the hours of operation for the splash pad are going to be? Because integrated lighting into the splash pad, a splash pad that will probably be able to use half the year at best?
So based on my understanding of North Dakota climate, you get about 30 days of the use of that, and all jokes aside. We looked at that in terms of if we either cut it now, because it'd be too cost prohibitive to add it later. So the idea was try to use during the construction process, at least keep the splash pad in because it was high during the public comment section, which was years ago, during the public comment of the task force. So we're still taking those into consideration as we move forward.
I'm just speaking about the integrated lighting in the splash pad. I think the splash pad's a good idea, but do we need to have the integrated lighting in the splash pad when, I mean, I would imagine Chief Dossinger doesn't want the splash pad on in the middle of the night. Like, do we need that integrated lighting?
So Zach, you'll have to explain that, because I actually thought we were just, it was the splash pad that we were considering, not just the lighting in there. Is that to include the, is that just for the lighting and the splash pad, or is that also?
The splash pad is already included in the base bit of the project.
So explain that part, because I don't think I could.
That splash pad system is $152,500 in the upper portion of this estimate. So the lighting is literally just to incorporate at, there's, I don't know how many, but there's dozens of water spigots on the ground, and there would be a light fixture inside that spigot. And when the water shoots up, it kind of gets lit up. The kind of, the reasoning behind why the task force thought this was a high priority item is that it would generate excitement and interest for the daily use kind of activities in Town Square. You know, one thing that makes a successful downtown plaza is not just the big events that you do on the weekend or once a month. It's really important to have consistent use of the plaza when there isn't an event. And things like the splash pad, like lighting, kind of increase the draw to a plaza for those daily use kind of activities, like a family can use the splash pad.
Well, is the lighting powerful enough that we're going to see it during the day?
I believe it is, to some extent.
Okay.
A crucial question. I think that's what, if it's high-intensity lighting, then I have seen those that, if you go to some places that have these during the day, you can see the lights during the day. But ideally, that's, you know, do you use that at night for just a water feature? I don't know if that's what the idea was, and we didn't ask that question during the last task force meeting. So I think we should get an answer on that. I think we should, we can still cut that if we have to, but it's something to look at, because it's $72,000. We just don't want to do it afterwards.
My thing is, from what Zach said, there are items, they're going to build this regardless, that we can add, like the two top As there. Even if we go ahead and approve and don't approve those two right now, we maybe find some alternate funding to pay for those, because those are addable. The rink, that, that's addable, the movie theater, and that's a big cost. That's 200 and, you know, $315,000 that we can add at a latter date, and it doesn't affect getting this project off the ground and getting it going.
Correct.
You know, that's the way I'm looking at these things. Even though they're high priority, task force priorities, they are things that can be added that are no additional cost to this project, because we kind of know what they are, unless there's inflation and they go up in cost.
Sure. And as I'm looking at them, like the gas heaters, in my mind, would be more important than the lighting of the splash pad. Because I feel like coming to the splash pad with the kids will be fun, but then adding the gas heaters so that there's, you know, in the winter, if there's an event that you can stay warm at. And so I feel like making it multi-seasonal would be a priority from my perspective versus increasing the features of one season.
Well, I will say, you know, the one that we're talking about waiting on the rink is probably going to get the most use of anything.
I agree.
I mean, you go down to the Deadwood, they're Town Square, they have one, that thing was packed all weekend with kids and families.
And I mean, just like what I stated before, I feel like that multi-season use is so important and that, I mean, I'm not going to take my kids to sit down there in the cold of winter unless we have something fun to do, like move around and skate.
And just as a, kind of a theoretical point, is it's very important for the success of downtown plazas that they're used year-round. So even though that is an add-on item that you could add later, I would caution you to not add it years down the road, because you could be setting up, the first two years of the plaza are very important to like gain the community awareness and buy-in that they're going to go there. So it is important to consider the full use of the site very early on after it's built so that you don't disappoint the public that there's this space that doesn't get utilized.
I think to get this started, though, to get it going, that's something we can reserve, that we can maybe find some alternative funding to say, okay, that's not in the project right now, but we have X amount of dollars that we can buy that, and by the time this project's done, yes, it's ready. Because even if we bid this in the fall, nothing's going to happen until next spring. I'm correct, right? Digging and if we bid it in the fall, there's going to, are they going to start any, you're anticipating no dirt work done or any prep for this fall yet?
Potentially.
Maybe? Okay. But essentially, it won't be finished till next year sometime.
Correct, correct.
Right. So that gives us some additional time to look at those, the rink, the movie screen.
Yeah, I mean, we basically, we're probably two, not this winter, but next would be the...
It's not, we're not going to be skating this winter.
It'd be winter of 2022.
Right. So yeah, there would be some time to get that in place if we need to be...
What I'm hearing commissioners is, we should still ensure that we keep the red or task force high priorities inside the project bidding, because some of those ones you can add later. And we could talk about the splash lighting. We don't have to necessarily decide that right now. The splash lighting, if we were able to integrate the music into those lights and use that in some alternative as a feature all year-round, not really sure about how we'd do in winter, but it's just something we have to ask the task force. But if you've been to places where they have these water features, they are a significant draw if you can incorporate the music correctly.
If it gets cold enough fast enough, it might be a nice aesthetic of icicles and...
I was thinking something about Public Works warming the water. I'm not sure.
And we can ensure that the lighting can work without the water. So you, you know, you could have the lighting go in the winter, and maybe it shines through the snow and does something cool.
Has there been further discussions with Public Works and Park and Rec for maintenance? They're okay at the layout, how we have certain features in there for clearing snow, if we're going to have pathways in the wintertime to the ice skating rink, that there are no issues with any of the features? Primarily, is it the building and the sites, and is it a joint, or is Park and Rec kind of signed off, this is going to be their baby?
We are working through the issues that, we still haven't solved every one of them, because we're still working through what could happen. But within that MOU, and the one that I'll present to the commission at a later time with DID, that does specify that Parks and Rec will be included in the maintenance as far as responsibility. And then we'll work through what that means for the city. We still have, we will still have some maintenance. It'll still be joint because we have the periphery and some of the items that are in there. So we're still working through a few of those details, and that'll be presented to the commission at a later date.
So if you basically looked, you basically looked at the task force priorities, and left out a couple of the Bs that Zach was talking about, there's three Bs in there that would have a major effect if we added it later. We're looking at about a $500,000 increase instead of a 1.1 or 1.2 almost increase, with us being able to reserve possibly out of that $500,000, $315,000, the movie screen and the ice skating rink. I, my personal opinion, I just, I think we need to get going on this so we can get this bid this fall.
Okay.
Yeah, comment?
Sure. Excuse me. Just a point of clarification. We don't need any decisions on any of the alternates tonight. The intent is that all the alternates that are listed here, we would finalize the construction documents and bid those items out. And so we, if we are authorized to proceed into the construction document phase tonight, we wouldn't have to make any decisions on any of those alternates for two to three months until the bids come back. So that gives you some time to think about offline as well. So those priorities that are listed there that Zach has outlined with the As and Bs, I mean, once you sign a contract with the contractor, at that point, we would need to know which alternates you'd like to select. And at that point, we would need to know if there's a budget increase to accommodate those items. There's a 15% contingency, as Zach has outlined. There probably is interest in moving forward this year. We do have a line item that's not summed up into the total for escalation. If you decide to bid the project out next year, we just have to figure in some of those additional costs, inflation and escalation of material prices. So the only decision that we would need tonight is to authorize authorization to move into the construction document phase. All those alternates, as I mentioned, could be selected at a later date. So you have a couple of months to have those decisions made.
Mr. Oderman?
I'd move to, I'd make the motion to approve that move on to the next day.
I'll second that.
We have a motion by Commissioner Oderman to approve, as stated, the approval of the construction documents.
This, the design development phase.
Okay, the design development phase by Commissioner Oderman, a second by Commissioner Soboluk. Any further discussion, questions? Now's the time to ask. Any concerns? Staff, any questions, concerns? Hearing no comments. Mr. Oderman?
Hi.
Mrs. Soboluk?
Hi.
Mr. Frederick?
Hi.
Ms. Walla? Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, backtrack here. We're up two reports. First item up is, we have job descriptions, and I'll be handled by City Administrator Whinningham.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioners. In your packet, what's before you is that was previously briefed by the Fire Chief. It's the reorganization or combination of the Fire Marshal position into the, what's now going to be called the Deputy Fire Chief. What was approved in the budget is the Assistant Fire Chief and the Fire Marshal position. What would be eliminated is the Fire Marshal position. Essentially, the Assistant Fire Chief then becomes the Deputy Fire Chief with those duties of the Fire Marshal as directed under the Fire Chief. There is a savings within the budget. It was not previously approved on the new grade that was presented during the 6 April meeting. The staff recommends that we do approve that. It'll be, and we have to get our common lexicon correct here. It shows classification class, but it's really grade 20. And we will clean that up in the future as we proceed with implementation of our new grades. And we will fly that position internally. And we do believe there's the skill sets within our city to move into that position as deputy.
Thank you, Mr. Whinningham. Any questions for Mr. Whinningham or Chief Presnel on this position? Mr. Oderman?
I'm going to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman, second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions for city staff? Hearing none will vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Next item up is Building Inspector III. Mr. Whinningham?
Mr. President and Commissioners, there was some discussion early on about adding positions, this position being one of them, under the building official. I don't believe this was included within the market study. When we presented the grades, it did, it was on the list, but I believe it was not in the appropriate grade. So what was not considered during that wage study was the increase in duties that we essentially got from the county. So that becomes the Building Inspector III. It currently shows classification, which should be grade 16. I'm recommending that goes to grade 17, and that becomes an exempt position, not an hourly rate.
Okay, so we have an amendment to this. Job description. Are there any questions on the amendment from Mr. Whinningham? This is from a grade 16 to a grade 17 exempt position with the additional duties that we have acquired from inspecting for the county. Any questions on this position?
Mr. Whinningham, what's the thought process behind going from non-exempt to exempt?
So that position becomes essentially two grades below the building official and as a succession plan, becomes the alternate building official in his absence. And so we determined that that position would have the same flexibility and would more than likely spend the hours beyond the 40 hours within the city with those supervisory skills necessary to supervise seasonal employees and to also be responsive as the alternate building official. And that was the logic.
Thank you.
Are there any other questions?
I've moved to approve the Building Inspector III job description.
With the amendment?
With the amendment.
With the grade amendment?
Yes, with the grade amendment.
We have a motion by Commissioner Sobeluk to approve the Building Inspector III with grade amendment.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing none will vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Our next item up will be the Senior Citizen Center Grants, and that'll be handled by Deputy City Administrator Carlson.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioners. The committee for the senior citizens has met, and the city budgets money every year from the 20% of the 1% to grant to our senior citizen organization. The purpose of this grant is to be used to purchase equipment, programs, operations, and or maintenance of their facility or program. And I am just going to go for the public is just to list the organizations that applied and the amounts that they were awarded. One thing I should state is that we do put in $50,000 each year from the Commission on Budget Process for the senior citizens, and so this is what it totals. For Prairie Senior Citizens out of Amadon, it was 4,300. Senior Citizens Activity Club out of Bellfield was 7,000. Sod Busters Club out of Bowman was 500. Sunset Senior Citizens was 5,000 out of Dickinson. Dodge Senior Citizens out of Dodge was 1,200. Second Forty Club Senior Citizen out of Headinger was 500. New England Senior Citizens was 5,000. Prairie Pioneers out of Reader was 9,000. Richardson Senior Citizens, Senior Citizens was 14,000. Golden Miners Senior Citizen out of Scranton was 1,000. And South Heart Senior Citizens was 2,500. And that's my report for that one.
Any questions on the Senior Citizen Grant Program report by Mrs. Carlson? Mrs. Carlson, you can proceed to the Southwest Regional Grants.
Okay, thank you. The city also budgets out of the 20% of the 1% grant money to our communities of the Southwest area. Our Southwest region includes eight counties, Stark, Dunn, Bowman, Golden Valley, Billings, Headinger, Slope, and Adams. But we do not, with this Southwest area, we do not allow anything within the city limits of Dickinson. The purpose of this grant is to give back to the region by contributing to brick and mortar projects that will enhance those communities. Awarded grant money will be dispersed to recipients after the project is completed by the year end. So with that committee, and I should have stated with the seniors, we always have commissioners on each committee that we do for the grant program. So, and then we bring in our citizens also from the community. So for our Southwest, those that applied were City of Beach Park Board, City of Bellfield, St. John's Ukrainian Catholic Church, Gladstone Fire Department, Headinger Park District, Hildir Park District, Knights of Columbus and Lefer, Emerson Cemetery and Manning, Manning Cemetery, Manning Community Club, Slope Area Rifle and Pistol Club out of Manning, Badlands Ministry out of Midora, Mott Fire Department, Mott Park District, Neuradic Catholic Workman Hall, Regents Consumers Co-op out of Regent, and PAWS, which is Parents Actively Working with Schools out of Richardson, with a total of $59,080. And that would be my report.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Any questions on the Southwest Regional Grant Program? Again, thank you, Mrs. Carlson, for those reports. She has one more report, and that's the 2019 Audit Report.
Thank you again, President Decker and Commissioners. Before you, in your packet, was a, excuse me, draft form of our 2019 Audit Report. And that Audit Report has been completed as per the engagement letter that was dated June 10 of 2020. Along with the annual 2019 Financial Statement Audit, the auditors did perform the single audit report and schedule of expenditures of federal awards year ending in December 31 of 2019. With the audit report, it is a responsibility of the auditing firm to report any deficiencies in internal controls. There are two kinds of deficiencies as follows. Material weakness, which is a deficiency in internal controls that is, that such is reasonable possibility that a material misstatement of the entity's financial statements will not be prevented or detected or corrected on a timely basis. Or a significant deficiency is a deficiency or a combination of deficient in internal controls that is less severe than a material weakness, yet important enough to merit attention by those charged with governance. Auditors did identify two significant deficiencies with the City of Dickinson. In the Schedule of Findings, we had 2019-01, which was a general fixed asset fund reconciliation. And our corrective action for that will be, this fund was not completely reconciled at the time of preparing the financial audit, and the city will develop a process to review this fund on a quarterly basis and reconcile it as we do of other government funds per year end. The second one is a continuing one that we've had since I've been here. It is 2019-02 finding, which is a GAAP financial statement preparation. And because the city staff and the cost of having someone or two people to be able to do the actual financial statements, we do ask our auditors to do the financial notes in preparation of our financial statement. And so upon that, there is a deviation between auditors doing it and then preparing the financial statements and notes that could be, might miss, might miss something as far as the audit goes. So that is why it becomes a significant. But the size of our city and the other sizes of our entities like this, that is a common finding that just continues on year after year because we just do not have the financial staff to do that. So with that, if there's any questions, I should state there were no findings in our major federal award programs. There were no findings at all on the internal controls. So with that, that is my report for the 2019. And then next week, the hard copies will be coming for the commissioners to review. And it's been completed already. And then we'll go to the state.
Thank you, Mrs. Carlson. Are there any questions for Mrs. Carlson on this audit? This is a report, we don't need to approve this this evening. And the hard copies will go out?
They're coming next week. The audit staff will be coming, will be coming next week.
Our next item up, we have our HR Monthly Report, and that'll be handled by HR Coordinator Nomenek.
Good evening, President Decker, Commissioners. First on the list, we just listed out the Utilities Manager. We did open that a while ago, and we're not successful, so it's kind of on hold at this time. We had a couple solid waste labor positions open. We were able to fill one, and we reopened the positions, interviews taking place this week on that position. Communications Specialist, we had three openings. We were able to make a couple hires. Those people have started their positions and will continue our search for communications specialists. Police Officer continues to be a tough one for us to fill. We've kind of made a new process, I guess, for it. We've kind of left it open until filled. We're trying to interview as often as we can and try to get as many of those positions filled, but it's been difficult getting good quality candidates applying for that position as well. We had a seasonal paleo assistant position, and we are, had interviews. We are in the offer phase right now. I'm doing background. Street Maintenance Operator, we had two positions. We were successful in filling both of those positions. We have a number of seasonal positions open right now, and they're working really hard at trying to get those filled. I think right now, it's a tough time because the people that we typically hire are college students, and they're trying to wrap up their year for the, for now, and they're not really thinking about a job. So I think it'll be a week or two before they start getting serious on that. But we have been able to rehire some of our seasonal staff that have worked for us in the past, so that's been nice. Museum Collections Manager, we did have a retirement in the museum department. We've opened the position internally and have interviewed, and so we will be filling that with an internal candidate from the museum. Solid Waste Labor, I just touched on that. We just did interviews. Solid Waste Recycling Operator, got interviews set up for next week for that position. And then some of the other ones listed here, we've just opened a limited hour assistant librarian, library assistant. A firefighter position is opened up internally. We have a water reclamation facility operator position that we just opened, and then another seasonal position that will be open later once we get a grant approval on that. Are there any questions on any of the positions or openings that we have?
Thank you, Mrs. Nomenek. Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek on the HR report?
Mr. President and Commissioner, I just want to add, you may be seeing some of our positions that are being flown that are in the seasonal category that were classified from last year's budget or this year's budget, our current budget that we're working off of. We did not change the seasonal classification for 2021, meaning that during the approval of the new grade, we didn't change the seasonal, primarily because of the staff work involved in getting all the departments' recommendations back on how they want to view those seasonals. So we have kept the seasonals, the status quo. It doesn't impact the budget. It gives us some time to then develop what I think the city requirement would be for a grade for seasonals that would fit each department's and city's requirement. So you'll see those being flown that we, on what was the old scale, but there is no seasonal scale that we've yet approved. If there's any questions of that, I don't know if that all made sense, but I'm hearing this for the first time as well, as I'm saying it.
Any questions for Mrs. Nomenek or Mr. Whinningham?
What's a seasonal tree data collector do?
They'll work with our GIS system, and they, we've actually had someone in this role for a year or two, and they track all the trees and it's all kept on GIS. They'll work with Daryl Hoeculter pretty closely with that.
Never heard that one before.
Any other questions? Before we move into public safety?
Okay.
Because in the past, I've been remiss in this when the meetings run a little long like this. Does anybody need, do we need to take a five-minute break, commissioners? Are we good to go? Drive on? All right.
No.
We'll move into public safety. Chief Gossinger?
Good evening, Mr. President, members of the commission. I'm before you with the March Monthly Report of the Dickinson Police Department. I'm disappointed that Fire Chief Presnel had to leave prior to me giving this report, but I'll make sure to brief him on it tomorrow. After the month of March, we responded to 2,199 calls for service, slightly up from last month. The most popular calls for service was, we responded to 93 suspicious persons or vehicle calls, 76.
76 speak-up and officer calls, 63 paper court services, and 64 61 welfare tests. We also responded to 57. We'll cite the traffic violation, so speeding with 56, 14 driving without insurance citations, 12 fatal directional vehicles, cemetery required, and six mobile drivers. There were a total of 59 total accidents in March. We still benefited from the nice weather and the nice road conditions. One of those accidents was an injury accident. of those accidents was an injury accident, and eight of those were incident for a hit ride. There were total of 504 traffic subs made, 268 warnings issued, and 125 state vehicles. Most popular arrests in the month of March included warrants, warrant arrests of fifty-nine, and drug-related arrests of forty-four. Our dispatch center also did an increase in activity level this month of March. They answered 797 emergency 911 calls, 5,072 non-emergency 911 calls, and had a little over 1,000 calls during the month of March.
Staffing our dispatch center, there are nine working full-time dispatchers for the month of March. Three are currently in training and not considered manpower at this point in time, and there are currently two open positions in dispatch for the month of March. During the month of March, we had some issues with our outdoor warning sirens that have spontaneously sounded twice. Currently, emergency management technicians are working and hopefully fix that issue. Our new dispatchers also attended a SkyWarn training, and will be attending training in April on that as well. Our animal shelter, they responded to, basically, our animal control division responded to eighty-nine calls for service. They impounded thirty-one dogs and sixteen cats for a total of forty-seven animals. So our animal shelters stayed fairly busy for the month of March. Training, our criminal intelligence analyst, we attended a criminal investigation refresher course. Detective attended a financial crimes course. Our dispatch center attended emergency medical dispatch training. We had one detective and one officer attend a car seat safety technician training, and we had one detective and one officer attend interview and interrogation refresher training as well. We also continue to train our staff on crisis intervention training, virtual reality training, and cabados training. We'll finish up our entire staff with that this month. Our criminal investigations division, they entered the month of March with forty open cases. They obtained thirty-one new cases that they got assigned in the month of March. There are callouts, which are callouts after normal business hours in which they respond to. They responded to the sexual assault. There was a fugitive arrest warrant on a dangerous felon. There was a negligent homicide, which required four detectives to respond to after hours. There was a residential burglary, an unintended death, and a suicide. Also like to congratulate Officer K-9, K-9 handler Corporal Peters and K-9 Kallo. They finished second overall out of twenty-eight teams in a competition that challenged them with drug-sniffing dogs. Do other drug-sniffing dogs find narcotics in both interior rooms and vehicles? K-9 teams scored based on time, handler skills, and K-9 accuracy. So congratulations to Corporal Peters on that. So that was kind of a quick, brief synopsis of the Dickinson Police Department's monthly activities for the month of March. Are there any questions?
Thank you, Chief Dossinger. Any questions for Chief Dossinger on the police report? Thank you again.
Thanks, Chief.
We'll move right into engineering. First item up, we have a cost-share reimbursement agreement for the East Broadway Dam rehabilitation study, and this will be handled by interim city engineer Marshick. Marshick?
Good evening, President Decker. Commissioners, before you is the cost-share agreement with the State Water Commission. This pertains only to the rehabilitation study for the East Broadway Dam. In the past, we would normally do these cost-share agreements for the project as a whole, and they have since changed up how they do their program. So it becomes a phased approach. So we ask for cost share for the study. We come back and ask for cost share for the next phase. Typically, there's three phases. So I just want to let you know that this will probably come back before you for the next phase. This rehabilitation study agreement provides us seventy-five percent reimbursement for the actual eligible costs incurred up to $48,898, and engineering staff recommends approval. Do you have any questions for me on this agreement?
Any questions for Mrs. Marshick on this cost-share agreement, reimbursement agreement? There are no questions or concerns. I'd look for a motion on this cost-share reimbursement agreement.
Mr. President?
By Commissioner Frederick.
Second?
Second by Commissioner Walla. Maybe if my left ear was a little bit higher than mine. So, any further comments or questions? Oh, I thought I heard one coming up.
That was me.
Oh, okay. Then it came.
Suzie beat me, yes.
You need to reach down a little bit, and I get a little bit deeper there.
Either Nicky's got a really deep voice, or I've...
So, I mean, a little high that time, so. I kind of half-breath or something, huh? So, a second's by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. We have a South State Avenue Water Main bid award. Mrs. Marshick?
Yes, thank you, President Decker. Commissioners, before you is the bid approval for South State Avenue Water Main project. This is city project number 2016-03. These bids were open March 9th of 2021 with the low bid from Cordova Construction in the amount of $916,651.75, which came in thirty-five percent below the engineer's estimate, which was nice to see. So engineering staff is recommending approval of the bid from Cordova Construction. Any questions for me on this item?
Thank you, Mrs. Marshick. Any questions on this bid?
It's a great number.
I don't know if we've ever had one of those before, so I just had to throw it in there.
Thirty-five percent under. With material costs right now, that's an unreal bid, actually.
Just throwing that out there on the town square. Thirty-five percent would be really helpful. So, any other questions, comments? Now I'd look for a motion on the bid award.
I'd move to approve.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Frederick. She did beat you that time. Second by Commissioner Walla. Any further discussion, questions? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
Thank you.
We'll move into Public Works, and the first item we have there is a bid approval for the landfill, and that will be handled by Public Works Director Zurov.
Thank you, President Decker and Commissioner. Bids for the landfill Leachate Lash station were received and open on March 23rd, 2021. A total of five bids were received. The engineer's opinion of cost was $800,192.53. This project upgrades the current Leachate and Stormwater line from the landfill to the water reclamation facility. The upgrade was required so Leachate and Stormwater can be pumped from the landfill year-round. The continued needed expansion of landfill cells and vertical expansion plan requires the removal of the Leachate and Stormwater from the site. Enclosed in the packet is the bid tabulation recommendation from Houston Engineering to award the contract to BG Excavation, Inc. for the bid price of $707,880, which isn't thirty-five percent under, but it is considerably under. Be available for questions, and Public Works staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions for Mr. Zurov on this bid? Hearing no questions or comments, I'd look for a motion.
So moved.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Oderman.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any comments, questions, concerns? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Mr. Zurov, you have a task order from Apex for a risk and resiliency assessment.
Yes, thank you. The American Water Infrastructure Act of 2018 requires the city to prepare a risk and resilience assessment, and also an emergency response plan. This task order will provide technical assistance, data analysis, planning, and reports necessary to complete the risk and resiliency assessment, excuse me, and the emergency response plan if necessary. We might be looking at that in-house, but this is necessary for compliance. This is due the end of June. Public Works staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Zurov. Any questions on this task order?
I'd move to approve the risk and resilience task order by Apex.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any comments, questions for staff, excuse me? Hearing none, we'll vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Mr. Zurov. We'll move on to planning. First item up this evening is the CTE site, Dickinson Public Schools. First item up is the flume or the future land use map. Planning Director Hadley will be presenting this.
Thank you, Mr. President and Commissioner. Good evening. This will be the second reading of Ordinance 1714 for the DPS CTE site. It's a forty-acre site that we heard at the last city commission meeting with no changes in this request since that point in time. Boy, that got dark, didn't it? I think everybody's familiar with it. Staff would recommend approval of the second reading of Ordinance 1714 as presented.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. This is Ordinance 1714. Are there any questions from the commission on this future land use?
And you do have the corrected motions in front of you?
Yes, and the motions are presented. We have a printout, so they have to have the correct motion, very detailed motions. So, if there are no questions, I would look for a motion.
I move the city commission approved the second reading of Ordinance number 1714 as presented. The proposed future land use amendment is compliant with the City of Dickinson, city code, and comprehensive plan, and is being in the best interest of the general public, health, safety, and welfare.
Second.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Sobeluk, with a second by Commissioner Oderman. Any further questions, comments? Hearing none, we'll go ahead and vote. Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. The next item up is a rezoning petition from general commercial to limited and limited industrial to public. And this is to consider the second reading of a zone change request from general commercial, limited to industrial and industrial to public. This site is described as a forty-acre site, which Mr. Hadley will proceed.
Thank you, President Decker. Yes, this is the second reading of Ordinance 1715, DPS CTE site. Once again, this continuation of the future land use or progression, future land use, and then a zone change for the public use of the CTE site for the school district. No changes have been made, and staff would recommend approval of this zone change.
Thank you, Mr. Hadley. And again, if there are no questions or comments on this rezone request, we do have a detailed motion that if you wish to approve this rezone, the motion is presented for you.
Mr. President, I'm the city commissioner for the second reading of Ordinance number 1715 as presented, the proposed zone change to complement the City of Dickinson city code and comprehensive plan, and as being in the best interest of the general public, health, safety, and welfare.
We have a motion to approve by Commissioner Walla.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Frederick. Any further questions or comments on this rezone? Hearing none, we'll vote. Ms. Walla?
Aye.
Mr. Frederick?
Aye.
Mrs. Sobeluk?
Aye.
Mr. Oderman?
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries. Thank you, Ms. Hadley.
Thank you.
We will move to item 10 on our agenda. That is commission section of the evening. Commissioners, are there any items you wish to discuss that were not on the agenda?
Mr. President?
Mr. Oderman?
I know we've talked about this in the past, but in light of the news about Luanne Way resigning from the Downtown Dickinson Association...
That's news to me.
Oh, okay, well...
Did not know that.
Yeah.
I didn't either.
News to two of us.
You know, we've talked about in the past of, you know, having potentially somebody that is a city employee do programming and stuff downtown and things like that. Is this the time to maybe enter into conversations with the Downtown Dickinson Association about... Because, I mean, we have financed that position in the past. So is that, is now the time to have that conversation now that that position is open?
Well, I will break this. In the past, we had wanted a PIO.
Yep.
And the position that we wanted morphed into something other than what we really wanted but was needed. Now is this the time going into the budget that we discuss? Maybe this is a dual role.
Yep.
This is a PIO that can also assist with our town square. And again, that's something for us. I, thank you for bringing it up. I was completely unaware of that. When did she resign?
I'm sorry to blindside you.
A few weeks ago.
A few weeks ago, huh?
Couple weeks ago.
Where have we been?
Yeah. Because we were under rocks.
I just found out this week.
We're just so inundated with everything else that, you know...
So I do, Mr. President, commissioners, I was aware, but I wasn't officially notified. So with most of those things, I would believe that we'd get official notification from those associations to the city, since we do have a financial obligation for that position. I did speak to DID Christie Schwartz on the phone, had a phone conversation about the town square project, and that's when I was informed that Ms. Way did resign, but I still have not seen anything official. I would imagine that would be a letter that the city at least could be notified. And I think going forward, we could put this on a work session and talk about shape-shifting the requirement and add that to PIO. I think it would be, could become a conflict based on what that association is doing as a public-private partnership. So a city employee in that role may create some other third and fourth order effects. So we have to maybe think through that. But if it's a requirement for the city, then we could consider adding that and looking at the budget requirement. And it should be somewhere in line with our city planner. It would make, it may make sense.
Sure. Because, I mean, I think it's important, when we build this downtown square, that we make sure that it's as successful as possible. And whoever, however that role is structured going forward is going to be very important. So... Anyway, I just wanted to put it on the radar, so...
Okay. Well, thank you. Like I said, I was unaware. Anything else? Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn. Now I'd look for a motion to adjourn. We are adjourned.